... and regular meeting of the Penfield Central School District. The meeting will please come to order. My name is Marcia Barrett. I have been appointed District Clerk of the meeting by resolution of the Board of Education. I will lead you in the pledge to the flag. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to get a better...
The next order of business is the administration of the oath of office to the re-elected board members. Would Mrs. Babi Harris and Mr. Piper please stand to receive the oath of office? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
and I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of member of the Board of Education
of the office of member of the Board of Education
in the Penfield Central School District
in the Penfield Central School District
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to show each other the first time.
(laughing) Fourth time. The next order of business is the election of officers. Nominations will be received first for the office of President. According to Robert's Rules of Order, a second to the nomination is not necessary. However, if someone wishes to make a second to indicate support, it will certainly be accepted. If the nominations are closed, a vote will be taken. Are there any nominations for President? Yes, Mrs.?
I would like to nominate John Piper for President. He's served us well this past year, and it's also a great credit to him, not only does he volunteer here in Penfield, but he's also going to serve as President of the Monroe County School Board Association, so he'll be President of two volunteer organizations, which is really extraordinary. He does a wonderful job, and I'm pleased to nominate him as President for another year.
Thank you.
And I second.
Mrs. Rutan nominated Mr. Piper, and Mrs. Babi Harris seconded. Are there any other nominations? As there are no other nominations, I declare the nominations for President closed, and I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Piper, please raise your hand. There is six in favor. And Mr. Piper has been elected President of the Board of Education.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Nominations are now open for the office of Vice President.
I would like to... Go ahead.
I would like to nominate Catherine Dean to the office of Vice President. I've had the pleasure of working with her as Vice President this year on the Advisory Committee and on the Legislative Committee with the Monroe County School Board Association. I think she's done a great job. I will second that.
Thank you. Mr. Elitch has nominated Mrs. Dean for the office of Vice President, and Mr. Piper has seconded it. Are there any other nominations? In that case, could I please have a show of hands for all those in favor of Mrs. Dean for Vice President? Wonderful, there is six in favor. Mrs. Dean is Vice President of the Board of Education. Congratulations. All right. Would the newly-elected Vice President and President stand to receive the oath of office? And raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President and Vice President
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of President
and Vice President of the Board of Education in the Penfield Central School District
of the Board of Education in the Penfield Central School District
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
Congratulations. I will now turn the meeting over to Mr. Piper.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you for doing that, and for those of you that don't know or haven't heard, this is Marcia's last meeting due to retirement, and we will certainly miss you. And you're always welcome back to the office. The board meetings, I don't know if you'll want to come.
(laughing)
As I said earlier, it was about three... north of 350 board meetings, which I don't know if anybody would want to do that. So, okay. Thank you very much. At this point, if I could have a motion a second that the agenda of July 12, 2016 be approved as submitted.
So, second.
We have a motion a second, all those in favor? Thank you. The approval of the consent agenda? We have several resolutions in there that are in your packet. If I could have a motion and a second, did the Board of Education approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
We have a second? Yes, we did, okay. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. We did have in our packet the treasurer's report for the month ending May 31, 2016. We do have our treasurer here tonight, Mr. Maloney, so welcome to you again. Nice to see you. We've all had a chance to review this. If I could have a motion a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, general fund revenue status report, general fund status report, school lunch fund cash report, school lunch fund revenue, and expense budget report for the month ending May 31, 2016, be approved?
So moved. Second.
Any conversation? Questions? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. We have no special reports. This is our visitor speaking time, where time is provided within the agenda for residents to bring concerns and comments to the board. Comments should not be related to any individual or to the specifics of negotiations, since it is not proper for the board to discuss these issues in public session. We do have comment forums that can be filled out prior to the meeting and given to the clerk. It is expected that speakers will limit their comments to five minutes or less. The board reserves the right to limit the total amount of time spent on the citizen's comment, period. Written communications are also appreciated to the board. Do we have any... anyone wishing to speak tonight, address the board?
No one has indicated that.
Okay.
Oh.
Yes, okay. Come forward, please.
Sorry, I was a little late.
No, it's okay.
That's okay. Thank you. I was wondering.
Just a moment.
Yes, please. Sit right there. And Mr. Wong, you live at 46 Fox Hill Drive, Fairport, New York, 14450. And welcome, and please feel free to speak.
Hello. My name is Jen Wong. As you said, I live at 46 Fox Hill Drive. I'm a graduate of Penfield High, 1999, and now I find myself back in Penfield. So the issue I've come to address at the board is admission of children into the kindergarten program. And as written communicated to me, as well as reading myself, that the cutoff period is December 1st. I have written to all of you on the board about this issue, and I'm quite concerned. The letter that was written to me merely stated that to look at an excerpt in the policy 7160. And the policy just merely states that the cutoff period is December 1st for all children that are five years to be admitted to kindergarten. My child is birthdate on January 6th, and so she'll miss the cutoff by a little over a month. I had asked the board to address this issue. However, you wrote back to me and just referred me to policy 7160. That's the same policy that James Piper referred to me and regurgitated to me when I called him, and the same policy number that Thomas Putnam regurgitated to me. So, you know, I liked an explanation from the board, or if I can talk to each of you individually, I would allocate that time. But my concern is, you know, the board, you know, has the interest of all children to excel in school. It's just like the Harris Hill PTA. One of the lines in the Harris Hill PTA is that they advocate for... they have a strong advocate for this education and well-being of every child. And, you know, I'm sure the board has that issue... that agenda as well. But, you know, you have a child who wants to go to school, who is probably prepared mentally, as well as academically, to go to school, and yet you have no process of whether, you know, to admit this child or not. You have private schools in this area and across the country where they make assessments on children who are on cutoff. As you know, the New York State law is any child four to six can attend school, and the board makes the ultimate decision on that cutoff. The cutoff is a cutoff date, and we should respect that, but we should also have some sort of leeway into assessing whether a student is capable of joining kindergarten or not. And, you know, the board has not offered me any indication of any assessment or anything. They all... they referred to me was policy 7160, a policy I know to all too well. And so, you know, I present... you know, I urge you guys, you know, to really look at this, you know, not just send me to a policy to look at, you know, to look at the policy, because I know the policy and you know the policy, but to really, you know, recognize, you know, read the letter I sent you again, and that is to advocate for every child's well-being, right? If the school board is truly, you know, trying to make, you know, every citizen of the school better, then why aren't you assessing, you know, children that needs, you know, special attention? And the other issue is, you know, there's private schools around here that do make these assessments. You know, is the school board saying that you can't provide such a service? You know, is... is the program there better than the program here? You know, these are all questions that you have to, you know, address. And I think just referring me to one policy and not having an explanation is a lack of service to us as citizens.
Well, thank you for your comments. We don't engage in conversation at this, but...
Sure. Understood.
I know the... just for your purposes, I know Dr. Putnam circulated, and I circulated a letter to the board, and we were in agreement at that, but it does not mean we won't listen to your concerns about looking at what is New York State policy and how we look at it. So I appreciate you coming forward and appearing. I know it's not easy to do so, and our communication is always through the superintendent. We don't meet individually or as a board with any...
any member of the community.
But I think you've given us some insight that we can certainly look at that, but it was discussed with the board and circulated in that regard.
Sure, but when I received the letter, the letter said, "Sorry, please refer to this policy." No explanation or nothing. I spent quite a bit of time, you know, writing that letter to you guys with deep thoughts, and, you know, I am just appalled by the lack of, you know... for... you know. I just think the school board should consider further.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else that's... nobody else? Okay. Superintendent's reports. Dr. Putnam.
Thank you. I also just wanted to say congratulations to Marcia, being the last board meeting. You helped me over the last two years get situated from a building level to a district office level position, and I will thank you for that forever. So thank you very, very much. And one of the last things, because even though Marcia is retiring, I keep handing her things to do, and so one of them was ordering pencils. And so the board members and D.O. folks will see a beautiful Penfield Patriot pencil. I visit the elementary school classrooms on a weekly basis, regular basis, and especially when I was over there in May and June, I realized that even the elementary schools have chewed the erasers off of their pencils, and they're working with the little nubs. And so we've talked as a board many times about continuing to celebrate the Team Penfield model and the Patriot model. And so this will be my way throughout the next year, or we've got enough pencils for several years, to get into those elementary classrooms on a more specific basis and have something that'll help them out. So please, please use that Patriot pencil with pride. Just some staff student honors, just a few this month, and then we will have a May monthly capital project update. Gary Huffman is here, and Alan McNiff, and then we'll do the reorg part of the meeting that we do. Graduation, we were all there. It was a great opportunity to see the class of 2016 graduate. We just have a couple of pictures. Please take a look at social media, our Facebook page and the website. Nancy Bradstreet is in the audience, oversees that, and we have a lot of great photos and a lot of great positive comments about graduation. And then I just point out the bottom picture, the gentleman standing to the left is Andre Gardner, and Andre Gardner was the winner of the Dick-Eyed Car giveaway this year and was very, very appreciative. He does not have his license yet. He's working towards it. He is attending school in Brockport and without... without any transportation. There was no transportation that he would have, and I know that there is a local youth group that was working to partner up and get transportation to bring him back for those weekly meetings, and this goes a long, long way. And it's just... so just kudos to Rich-Eyed and Mitch-Eyed, his father, and Dick-Eyed. I just thought it was just a great opportunity, sort of no strings attached car, which is really nice, and it really hit a great kid. So at that bash when Andre won, what I heard over and over again was, "Man, you know, I thought I'd be angry that I didn't win, but gosh, he deserves it more than I do." So it was really, really great, and he was really proud that day of graduation. He's had enough to be an elementary school teacher, so maybe we'll see him in a few years applying here in Penfield. Business class, Business First rankings. I know I share these with the board, and we shared them through social media as well, but just for the public's viewpoint, all six Penfield schools were ranked among the top schools in the Rochester area according to Business First. Cobble's Elementary was named number one out of 161 area elementary schools for the fourth year in a row. Scribner was fourth, Harris Hill ninth, Indian Landing 11th, Bay Trail Middle School was ranked third out of 95 middle schools in the area, and Penfield High School was ranked fourth out of 87 high schools. Congratulations to all of our students and staff members for this outstanding recognition. I'll be the first to say, and you've heard me say it before, is that while test scores are important and we're very happy with these honors, I'd go toe-to-toe with anybody that we're number one across the board. You walk into any of those buildings, Indian Landing, Harris Hill, Scribner, Cobble's, for our elementary buildings, and you just see kids having an incredible time, engaging families, engaging faculty. It's a... it really is a great place to be, and the same for the middle school and the high school. National language exam. Our newsletter, The Prestige, went out, and just as a reminder, a few years ago, the State of New York removed the Regents category from our languages other than English. You no longer take a Regents exam, and so while those scores aren't listed, we do want to find a way to celebrate the great work that our Loep departments do in middle school and high school. And so the national language exams is a way to do that. These are voluntary tests. Kids do not have to take them, but we open it up to everybody to take, and they're a very national prestigious exam. Nine high school students received Spanish awards, 19 PHS students received French awards, nine PHS students received Latin awards, and 27 PHS students received the National Medusa Mythology Awards. And so just another great honor of the great work. Again, not all students take these. Typically, students have to sign up to take an additional test, so we don't get as many people turning out, but it does say a lot about the hard work our Loep department puts in. And that is what I have for my updates, and I will give Mr. Huffman a moment to come up, and we'll do the capital project update. And if you have any questions for Gary, I know Mr. Piper will allow time.
Good evening. How's everyone? Congratulations, Marcia. You've always been there to help us. I can't say enough. You're a wonderful person, and I hope you have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you. Pleasure knowing you.
We're going to miss you. I'm going to give a brief update on the capital project. It's going really well. It's just firing on all... yeah, really, I mean...
(inaudible)
It's firing on all cylinders. The Penfield High School gym is doing really well. As I said last time, the abatement was finished. We got our clean bill of health. Mercury's all gone. Contractors are in there cooperating very well with each other, installing the duct work, hanging the drywall and the tectum panels for sound attenuation. Lighting is going in. All the backstop framing and the backstops are up, so it's really going well. I just mentioned that Alan, I'll do a pre-installation conference with the flooring contractor at the end of July, so we're anticipating the new floor going in August, so going really good. It's not jinxed it. So the rest of the project casework showed up in droves to Scribner, so... and it's just... we're overwhelmed with new casework, which is a great problem to have. Always better to have the stuff in there to put it in than to be screaming and yelling at contractors to get it here. So we're in control of our destiny. So abatement went well there, and now they are putting in casework. So I have... I probably shouldn't say this. I have no issue with thinking we will have a great opening for school. There's no issue. I don't see any wrinkles, so we're all good. We're all good. So the security project is going well. Contractor installing the panels for the work associated with that cabling. Elmer Davis is roofing at the... doing the roof, new roof at work at Harris Hill. Oh, and last time I was here, I reported there was one last split system to install for the air conditioning for the data closets. Now it's all done, so electricians are just chasing that and putting in the permanent wiring. It's all temp wire in for now, but they're going through that and getting the permanent wiring and finish that up. So overall, it's very good. Budget is very good. Again, we're very... we're in a great shape financially on the project as well. So I see us finishing in the fall with all the bells and whistles and punch lists and everything later this fall, so... and we'll be done, and it's right on schedule. So the plan was to be finished by the end of the year, so Mark can do his final cost reports, and I see that happening.
Great. Board members, any questions for Gary? I just had one. You know the new gym floor that goes in?
Mm-hmm.
You know, they get beat up, obviously, and does the manufacturer have standards, or Alan may know too, about how often you seal those or reseal them or strip them or anything?
It's... it's a synthetic floor, so I don't... don't think... I've not seen them stripped and waxed and all that sort of thing there. It's a permanent finish that comes with it.
So it's just cleaned with the machine with water, right?
Right, right, right. It's cleaning... it comes down to cleaning, yes.
So constant cleaning is what keeps it...
It's diligence with cleaning.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they have floor machines, so they can do that in a pretty quick timeliness.
Okay.
So the other thing I didn't mention was the... most of the abatement work is done for the locker room there, too. We're doing... and so that work is ongoing and progressing well at the high school gym.
I think everybody will love the new gym and the addition space, too, which we probably should call it the Patriot Room or something like that, for lack of a better name, but it's going to look great.
It is.
So it's been long coming, and I know there's been a lot of things that have gotten in the way from previous work, but we appreciate the diligence, and being really on time is great, so thank you.
You're welcome. What's up?
Yes. Oh, Barb, do you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you get a Team Penfield pencil?
I didn't. I meet with Gary on a regular basis at our OACM meetings. I'll make sure that all the members get a Penfield pencil.
I...
No.
I don't think so, no. Keep them under lock and key. Gary, I'll make sure you get a pencil.
Thank you. Thank you.
Gary.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. What's up?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. (inaudible)
Alan, thanks for coming as well. I appreciate it. Nice to see you, and...
Alan, thank you for getting the air conditioning on as our move from the library to the commons for this evening's meeting.
Yes, that was great.
We are at the portion of our meeting which is our reorganizational items, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Maloney to walk us through that.
Thank you. Each year, we kick off our school year with our organizational meeting. Basically, the meeting has to take place 15 days prior to the start of the school year. We basically establish appointments, provide designees for certain positions, appoint our depositories, appoint certain authorities for signing checks, our student club lists. So you've got 51 items in front of you. The ones I just talked about are included. They're also up on the slide, but also we establish our depository, which banking we're going to do business with. Basically, this is our... allows us to continue our business for the new school year. We're closing down 15 and 16, but this is our kickoff to 16-17. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Board members? We've all done it before. Okay. Thank you and welcome again for coming and doing that. So for the public that sees us on TV or streaming, this is our reorganization meeting, and much like a business would do articles of incorporation review every year or restate their conditions of management, et cetera, et cetera, we have these 51 items that are stated in the agenda. We do not read all these, but we'll take a magnanimous motion, as we call it, to deal with these 51 items. But before we do that, do board members have any questions in regard to these before we do anything? Okay. It's our standard course of business. All right. That being the case, if I could have a motion and a second that the organizational items 7A1 through 7A51 be approved for the 2016-2017 school year. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
We have some change orders that have been stated in your agenda for the high school, Cobble's, Bay Trail, and I think that was it. These above orders have been reviewed and supported by Architect Vic Tomaselli, Gary Huffman, our project manager, Clerk of the Works, Alan McNiff, and Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mark Sansucci. If I have a motion and a second that the change orders as described above be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions in regard to the change orders? Okay. All those in favor? Post. None. Okay, thank you. As part of our action that we were alerted by Assistant Superintendent Mark Sansucci last meeting in regard to our bus garage, we have to do a secret resolution and a resolution in regard to that, so I'll read these. In the past, the State Department of Education acted as... "In the past, the State Department of Education acted as lead agency as responsible for making the determination regarding potential environmental impact of school construction projects. The state has shifted that responsibility to the local district. In this case, Penfield Central School District Board of Education has authorized submission of an emergency capital project for the Penfield Bus Garage removal and replacement of the oil separator and remediation of any contaminated soil. The scope will also include miscellaneous renovation of the garage, including replacement of heaters, lighting, receptacles, overhead door operators, and removal of a wall and wash bay equipment. The anticipated budget that we heard last meeting was two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. Type-two actions are actions which have been determined not to have a significant impact on the environment, they do not require completion of an environmental impact statement. This resolution confirms that the proposed project is a type-two action, and no further action is required under law. Whereas the Board of Education and the Penfield Central School District have authorized the emergency submission of a capital project consisting of removal and replacement of the bus garage oil separator and other miscellaneous renovation of the bus garage, and whereas the school district has submitted, or will submit, a scope of proposed project with the State Education Department identifying the nature and scope of the proposed project, therefore, it is resolved, according to regulations of the New York State Education Department and the Penfield Central School District, as primarily responsible for determining whether an environmental impact statement is required under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, known as SECPRA, and the regulations of the DEC. As promulgated thereunder and for otherwise making necessary determinations for findings under SECPRA prior to making any action with respect to the project. Based upon review by this board and the proposed project, the board hereby declares itself the lead agency in the extent necessary for this purpose, and hereby finds that the proposed action constitutes a type-two action as defined in the SECPRA resolutions. The action consists of routine activities of an educational institution, as well as replacement, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of a structure or facility in kind on the same pursuant to New York law. A copy of this resolution will be placed on file with the district office, where it will be available for public inspection during the business hours. Since this is a resolution, the clerk will take the ayes and nays, so we will have a motion in a second before we do that, if I could. Move ahead.
So moved.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, and clerk will do the call.
Mr. Ellidge?
Aye.
Mrs. Daviers?
Aye.
Mrs. Benati-Chitzi?
Aye.
Mrs. Rutan?
Aye.
Mrs. Dean?
Aye.
And Mr. Piper?
Aye.
There is six in favor, none opposed.
So, and going on with this declaration and appropriation of a contingent expense, and as we've talked before, the State Education Department isn't really quick on these, but this was an emergency, and they're very quick, because anytime you use the word contamination, even though it doesn't impact our students, it's, it's very important to deal with it. We discovered this significant issue regards to the oil separator, and this is a device which is designed to remove oil from stormwater runoff before it leaves our property, and this prevents oil that is spilled or leaked during routine maintenance, and during routine maintenance, the building and ground department learned that the groundwater is flowing into the device, which means oil could be leaking out. Accordingly, the DEC has been notified as appropriate. As consulting with our facilities planning of the State Education Department, they indicate it's appropriate for this board to declare this an emergency project. With this designation, it's possible for the facilities planning to expedite the approval, and this is necessary to get this work done during the summer before we put all the buses into action. We had previously been planning work on the bus garage to include replacement of the failed heating units and some minor work with the wash bay, they have indicated at the SED that they would consider this part of the emergency designation. Then, we will be also eligible for state aid. The budget includes two hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars as a transfer to capital for routine capital projects. However, this amount is not enough to accommodate the replacement of the oil separator and removal of any contaminated soil. Representatives from SEI Design and ME Engineering have inspected the device and have developed the following scope of work: replace the damaged oil separator located adjacent to the garage, replacement of eight-unit heaters within the garage, replacement of two overhead door operators, remove the portion of walls separating the bus garage repair bay and the wash bay, remove existing wash bay equipment, install heat to flammable material storage room, replace lighting and receptacles in the old wash bay, and install new furnace for part storage and break room. Contaminated oil, soil remediation is the last item. Perimary budget is approximately two hundred ninety-nine thousand, which includes a hundred forty-seven, eight hundred thousand dollars for construction costs and contingencies, and a one hundred thousand dollar allowance for contaminated soil remediation, and fifty-two thousand, fifty-one thousand two hundred for incidental costs. The most difficult aspect of budgeting for this is the removal of contaminated soil. This expense could vary greatly depending on what we uncover during the replacement. If necessary, we will, we will have to amend that. The resolution below is based on an overall project cost of two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, with two hundred thirty-seven, five hundred dollars from our two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget, and a remaining sixty-one thousand five hundred coming from unreserved fund balance. So, we have a resolution that we will also have to do. Whereas the oil separation system in the district bus garage has failed, requiring replacement and possible remediation of surrounding soil, and whereas additional renovations are also required to the bus garage, including but not limited to replacement of heaters, lighting, receptacles, and overhead door operations, and a removal of walls and wash bay areas, and whereas the Penfield Central School District has received and considered the opinion of architects regarding replacement of the existing oil separation system remediation and bus garage renovations, is recommended that the district make provision for immediate replacement and recommend renovations as an emergency project, and whereas the emergency project is essential for the protection of the health and safety of students and staff, in particular for the protection of the district's property. The district is also the lead agency with regard to the proposed project under the provisions of SECPRA. Therefore, it's proposed. This declares a replacement of the existing oil separation system remediation and building renovations at the bus garage as a secret type-two action requiring no further review. The district hereby finds replacement of the existing oil separation system remediation and building renovations are essential for the protection, the health and safety of the students and staff of the district's property as well, and hereby declares the project to be an ordinary contingent expense hereinafter known as the project. The maximum estimated cost of the project is two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, we funded with two hundred thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars from our two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget, and sixty-one thousand from unreserved fund balance to the maximum extent possible by state building aid. Superintendent and all officers and employees of the district are hereby authorized and directed to take all steps reasonably necessary or appropriate to complete the project and carry out the intent of this resolution, and to apply for any eligible state building aid if applicable. This will take effect immediately. So, we will have the vote on this resolution. I just wanted to comment for Gary and Alan, I think that contingency is a, a good amount. I happen to run an organization with a building where we had that as a result of unknown oil tanks from about eighty years prior that leaked, so, you just don't know the cost of that remediation, and this was fifteen years ago, so, I'm glad you've got substantial, and hopefully, that amount will cover it, because you just don't know, so. Okay, is there a question? Yes.
Just on top of that, so, when you come up with that figure, is that, is it just simply a stab in the dark, or do you base it on anything at all, or is it...
No, we looked, we've looked at what the cost of an oil separator is, we used our best skilled judgment in making assumptions of what is in the ground.
Okay.
We've looked at the cost of the lights and the door operators and all that, we, we know what those costs are, there's, there's no stab in the dark here at all.
Okay.
But, the ground itself, we don't know.
That's what I was referring to, right.
That's why we have this contingency amount, hopefully is enough.
Okay.
And hopefully, we won't use any of it, hopefully it's contained immediately within that space of that separator.
Oh.
We tried to be very conservative on our number, too, I mean, Gary and I have done this several times before, so we can have a general idea what it would probably cost us, but we wanted to be in that air of caution, try a little bit higher, just in case, rather than have to come back.
Because the concern is the soil.
Exactly.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? And, and timing is everything in this, so I, hopefully, we caught it soon enough, I know Mark thought we did, so. Okay, if we could have a clerk with a roll call, please?
Mr. Ellidge?
Aye.
Mrs. Daviers?
Aye.
And Mrs. Benati-Chitzi?
Aye.
Mrs. Rutan?
Aye.
Mrs. Dean?
Aye.
And Mr. Piper?
Aye.
There is six in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. Under financial items, in line with this, we have to authorize a contract with SEI Design Group, and as we mentioned, I previously discussed the nine items and the role that we're going to take these, and they've submitted an approval, a proposal for the necessary design and construction, and as we know, it's two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, and we estimate a hundred forty-seven, eight hundred will be the construction budget and contingencies, a hundred thousand allowance for contaminated soil, and fifty-one thousand two hundred incidentals, including design management testing, et cetera. Calls for a fixed total fee of fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, which is equivalent to ten percent of the estimated construction costs. The district will also issue a five thousand dollar retainer to New Val for any necessary soil remediation design. Approval of this agreement is recommended. If I could have a motion in a second, that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent negotiate the final terms and enter an agreement with SEI Design for services related to the capital project described above.
So moved.
All those in favor? Thank you. So, in line with that, we have to authorize the contract for campus construction, and at our January twenty-eighth meeting, we approved a contract, the amount of four hundred eighty-nine thousand with campus construction for work on our capital projects, which were Scribner, the roof, the athletics, field lighting, security improvements, and Indian Landing sewer replacement. This contract was amended by the board on September twenty-second, two thousand fifteen to recommend the extended schedule, and this amendment increased the existing contract by eighty-nine thousand to five hundred seventy-eight thousand. Now, we need to further amend it, as we found something that needs to be done. So, the two hundred ninety-nine thousand project includes a replacement of everything we've discussed earlier, and the proposed fee for SEI Design for this work is seventy-five hundred dollars, seven thousand five hundred, which is five percent of proposed construction costs. If I could have a motion in second, that the Board of Education authorizes the seven thousand five hundred dollar amended to the contract with campus construction as described above?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Okay, so we've covered everything about this project, and just for our public, it's, you know, just something that we find, this is what we do in order to get things moving quickly, and fortunately, New York State has an emergency system, or otherwise, we'd, we'd have our bus garage temporarily relocated, because that's what happens in these instances, so. Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Onto our BOSI Summer School Transportation Contract. We do a transportation contract with BOSIs for the school year two thousand sixteen-seventeen. Contracting amount of one thousand dollars for received for ESY field trips, contracts in the amount of seven hundred twenty-four thousand twenty-nine dollars for school year transportation for disabled vocational and shuttle transportation, and charges for necessary bus attendance are included, and sixteen hundred dollars after school field trips received by the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, also known as BOSIs, for transportation provided Penfield students for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. The following motion is in order in regard to this. If we could have a motion in second, that the Board of Education authorize the signature of the president to the contracts, the amounts of one hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred one dollars and fifty cents, and one thousand dollars for summer school, and seven hundred twenty-four thousand, twenty-nine dollars and zero cents, and sixteen hundred school year from the Board of Cooperative Educational Services covering transportation provided Penfield students in the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. The dollar amount, as we know, is an approximation, the district will be billed for the actual number of students transported and aids used.
So moved.
Any questions on that? All those in favor? Thank you. Our initial contract for services for two thousand sixteen-seventeen is in the amount of eight million, seven hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars and seven cents, and this has been received from BOSIs covering services to be provided at Penfield for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. So, if I could have a motion in second, that we authorize, as a Board of Education, the signature of the president to the contract, the amount of eight million, seven hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars and seven cents from the BOSIs covering services to be provided at Penfield students for the two hundred, two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year, and payment of the subsequent invoices for services according to the schedule of ten times per year, plus additional supplemental billings as needed. The superintendent of schools is also authorized to amend the contract from time to time as additional service is, are requested or dropped.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor? Okay, our school physician contract, as we all know, Cindy DeVore is our school physician, and we have to approve the contract in terms for her, for each year, so for two thousand sixteen-seventeen, per the terms of the original two thousand twelve RFP, the contract calls for a payment of thirty-three thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars, a two-point-nine percent increase over last year. Dr. DeVore's contract runs through August first, two thousand sixteen, through July thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. If I could have a motion in a second, that the board authorize the signature of the superintendent to negotiate final terms and enter into a contract with Dr. Cindy DeVore and the district for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year.
So moved.
Any questions, conversation? And she does this through the RFP for several other schools as well.
Yes.
So, we basically get a bargain because of group purchase of a physician in, in that sense, so.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. We have another resolution regarding Article VII tax certiori matter with Morgan East Avenue. This involves, generally involves us giving, and the town giving back tax dollars based on a formal challenge, which Morgan East Avenue bid to the tax assessment for their property at seven hundred thirty Linden Ave for the tax years two thousand eleven, twelve through two thousand fifteen, sixteen. We have agreed to certain reductions in assessment, and in the Supreme Court, Judge John Ark issued its decision adjudicating these challenges and reduced the assessments as follows. So, the total refund is, on our behalf, that's school district only, is seventy-eight thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars, fifty-nine cents. So, if we recall, anyone can challenge their taxes, businesses in particular do it all the time, and you end up negotiating or going to court, and ultimately, I've always felt that generally, the consumer wins, or the business owner wins, but, so we have a contingency fund for that amount. So, if I could have a motion in second, by the Board of Education approves the payment as described above, and authorizes payment of the refund from our tax certiori reserve.
So moved.
All those in favor? Question?
Right, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to, and to make sure it's clear that what the challenge was, was against the assessment, and our, what we levy in taxes from is based on that assessment, we, we don't set the assessment.
Right.
But we have to abide by the outcome of that.
Yes, and the assessment is done by the town of Penfield, or we have four towns, so that we could have a challenge in, and it's beyond our control, which is a great point, so, thank you for that, Mark. All those in favor? Thank you. We have no policy review. Every year, we reaffirm, did we have a policy? No?
No.
Okay, thank God you said, or... Yeah, okay.
He's just doing a little, sorry.
Cheer, okay. We have a code of conduct for the New York State School Board members, and this code of conduct, school boards may approve it yearly as a reaffirmation and show support for the state code of conduct. Now, not all school districts do this, I learned, but I think it's great that we do that, and a copy of it was in your packet, and... And this is going to be utilized by the Monroe County School Boards this year as we develop more professionalism. If you read that, most professional organizations have a code of conduct. And if you, if you don't, it's not a professional society. So I know architects have it, lawyers, attorneys, realtors, et cetera. So I think it's great that we do that. If I could have a motion in second that the Board of Education approve the New York State School Board Code of Conduct? Questions? All those in favor? Our district emergency response plan pursuant to the education, Commissioner's Regulation, the district held the required public hearing for the emergency response plan on May 24th, 2016. It has been available for public comment for 30 days and now must be adopted by the board. If I could have a motion in second that the emergency response plan be approved as presented on May 24th, 2016, per Commissioner's Regulation, Section 155, 17, Paragraph E, Line 3?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, so that's our organizational piece. As far as President's remarks, I thank you for your confidence, reaffirming myself and Catherine. And, you know, I talked to, as you know, I'm starting to see a lot of different board members, and I will, for the Monroe County School Boards Association. And, you know, we certainly do shine, so our collaboration is admired by other school districts, and so I think it's important that we're able to do that. And also thank you to those of you that have volunteered to be on a committee or chair of committee for the Monroe County School Boards Association this upcoming year. So I think it's great that we'll have a, a lot of Penfield involvement in the leadership side of it. With that in mind, any questions on that? No, okay. We also have to deal with our committee assignments, which includes Monroe County School Board Association committees. So I would note with those committees, I'd like you to think about that and get those to me as soon as possible. If you want to be on the legislative committee, Mark will be co-chair. So thank you, Mark, and Executive Committee, Dr. Putnam and I will be there. Steering Committee, Mark and Catherine and myself will be there. So please let me know your choices as soon as possible in regard to that. We also have a New York State School Board Association Legislative Representative. For the, I've done this in the past, for the past two years, Mark Elitch has done that. So if you're still interested, let us know. If not, we, you know, we can train someone to move on.
Yeah, I think it would be good to have someone else give a chime. I enjoy it, but it's, it's something that everyone should get a chance to do.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's a two-year thing, really. And if you can get through those two years and do it, it's, it's great, so. Looking for a volunteer on that. And as you know, if someone doesn't volunteer, someone gets appointed.
If no one volunteers, I'll gladly do it again.
Oh, okay, so send us an email. That's great. Not to put you on the spot, but that would be great. And Mark will help you, and I'll help you with, with that, so. And it's important, because you cast our vote at the annual convention, the business meeting of the New York State School Boards Association. And as we know, we've put a couple motions in there, one of which ended up becoming law. And as you also know, we're a very diverse group of board members across the state. So a little sanity also helps to prevail. Because there's, how many were there this year, Mark? I mean, proposals. There were probably like 22 different board proposals, and...
Does, does one of them include rooftop gardens?
Okay, so we also have our subcommittees that we, I'd like some volunteers for advocacy, communications, Facebook task group, policy and special ed. Our community committees, which are audit, facilities, health and safety, and district liaisons, futures, our non-public school liaison. And as far as PAB presidents and PTA boosters, if you'd like, we will rotate those as we have done in the past. I think it's great for us to try and hit as many as we can, even though we have a lot going on with our things here. So if you could get those in as soon as possible, I guess. Because I, I do know that the staff at Monroe County School Boards are starting to get those, and are trying to sort through all the various committees. Okay? And I'll get them to Marcia, and, or you can copy. Yes, so send it to both of us, and then we'll talk, and you'll still be here.
Through the month.
Through the month, so we'll get that done, okay? Great. Is there any other business to come before the group? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn at 7:58 PM. Second, all in favor? Thank you.